Order, it is Monday, August 6th, 2012, 7:00 PM. There's anyone present who may require special assistance to participate at this public meeting, please let us know and we'll try to assist you. Roll call?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
LaFever?
Here.
Crum?
Here.
And Mayor Fetter?
Here. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Eleven, Terry Francis's request to be on there doesn't specify where the woman's wants to address.
How about all of them?
So I propose removing that one. Jim Edelman's is a question regarding the termination, which we're not, we haven't even approved the city attorney at this point, I'm not prepared to discuss that one. And thirteen is the one regarding Bill DeWitt asking for the resignation of Dee Clark.
And as far as question on leading up to Angela, I mean, you know, if you don't want to answer, you don't have to. I believe these people requested to be on the agenda and they should be allowed to address the council.
I understand. I stand to be that way. You want to have the council call?
Have you got your mic on?
Yes, sorry, can you not hear me?
You're here, so.
You're here, and you're right there.
Can you pass the mic to the speakers?
Yep.
For clarification, I made a motion that items number eleven, twelve, and thirteen be removed from tonight's agenda.
Second motion?
The people asked to be on, so I think they should be allowed to be on, even if we don't be talking.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to remove those. Any other discussion? And I believe they should be left on. Councilmember Crum?
Name?
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
You can veto Randy.
That's a conflict of interest on Dee's part.
Hold on.
You can't vote on that.
Hold on, hold on, people. Just let me think for a couple minutes. Thing is, I can't veto a simple motion.
Are you doing anything?
It's our meeting.
I agree, and it's the agenda that I set up, and I believe that they're just asking for a lot of trouble if we do this. They have made the motion in a second, I can't stop it, I don't believe, I would like to.
He cannot vote on that.
He can't vote.
She's turned it down.
Skip, what are the rules we have to jump through to get you to hear us?
Comments?
Were you scared?
We actually, they've made a motion in a second. I believe that Dee is in, does have a-
Well, we make a motion for them to hear us.
Okay, hold on, folks.
Randy, I'm gonna make a motion at your meeting. We're not gonna-
Hold on, folks.
We're not gonna have that. Get out of the way.
All right, folks, calm down. This is, we, I would love to be able to keep it on there. I believe that this is gonna be, you know, I don't know, since our attorney's not here, I am not a lawyer, the way I read things, if you get a simple motion to do it, it has to be done, I don't agree with it.
You can veto anything, Randy. You have a motion on the table, Randy.
We've already voted on the motion.
No, you've got another motion to adjourn.
I didn't make the motion.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
No.
It was basically, I thought it was-
It's basically-
Yeah.
You don't know what you're doing. You think? Okay. We've, we've, you'll certainly be welcome to, you'll certainly be welcome to talk in
citizens' questions and comments, and you can ask all your questions then. Okay. The next one.
Let him go, let him go. Let him do it.
Next item, we've approved the agenda with the deletions of eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Agenda item number four, approved the consent agenda. This is the approval of the minutes of the July 23rd, 2012 regular city council meeting. Set date of Monday, August 20th, 2012, for the next regular city council meeting. Approved claims register and a building permit for day on quarters.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? I have a motion in a second. Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda's been approved. Agenda item number six, approved closing of Sixth Street by the courthouse to Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue between Sixth Street and Seventh Street for the Logan Chamber of Commerce on August 25th, from 11:00 AM through approximately 5:00 PM for a car motorcycle show and cruise. Chris, are you here? Okay, come on.
The Logan Chamber of Commerce has put together, perhaps, 4th of July, a first annual car show and motorcycle show. We kinda, kinda put this together pretty quickly. Car shows and motorcycle shows are pretty popular, so we thought this would be a good way to bring people to town, you know, show our town off and use our park. So, but, from what we started, we have quite a bit of interest into this, so this is the reason why we're requesting so much space right at the moment. Depending on how many cars that we have, then, you know, we can use the space. If we don't get as many as we think we're gonna get, then we can open those streets, you know, in a timely manner. So what will happen is, in the courthouse parking lot, it would be the registration area. So they'll come off Highway 30, come in, get registered, come off into Sixth Street, and start going all the way to Fourth, where the bank is, and then we'll just start lining them up all the way through. The motorcycles will be probably in the park, maybe the sidewalk or something to keep their motorcycles up, but that's kinda what we're looking at. Registration will start at 11:00. The cruise starts at 4:00, and there'll be food, music in the park, so hopefully we'll have a great turnout for that. Like I said, this is our first annual, so that's why we're requesting so much space. And I have contacted, between Ray and I, you know, a lot of the, there's rental homes, there's businesses and stuff like that, we've talked to quite a few of them, and they weren't willing to cooperate with us. So I'd like to request to get this disclosed for that day.
I'll make a motion to approve the closing of the streets for the motorcycle car show.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
Agenda item number, approving of the streets has been approved. Agenda item number eight, this is appoint Aaron Rodenberg from Council of Arts as our new city attorney. I have spoken to him, got some references, and he has agreed that he would represent us.
Motion to appoint Aaron Rodenberg as city attorney.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
We have approval on appointment of Aaron Rodenberg as new city attorney. Next agenda item is discuss and approve a 25 percent rate, excuse me, 25 cent raise for Marilyn Kaiser. Sorry, I tried helping out Marilyn. Marilyn was to have gone to clerk school a couple weeks ago, and it is standard that upon completion of clerk school or training, they would receive a 25 cent raise. Marilyn graciously did not go to a clerk school due to our situation. She'd have been out for a week and a half, we couldn't have had payroll, we couldn't have done a lot of other things, so I believe in lieu of that, since she would have gone, that we should approve a 25 cent raise.
I'll make a motion to approve the 25 cents per hour raise for Marilyn.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
25 cent per hour raise for Marilyn Kaiser's been approved.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of ordinance number 441 on the water race. I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance number 441 has been approved. Next on the agenda, set date August 20th, 2012, at 7:00 PM for public hearing on dismissal of city clerk through request of Angela Winther.
What a date you appoint. I'm looking to move in with that.
It has to be, we need to make a motion and approve it for publication, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve August 20th as the date for the public hearing.
I have a motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Crum?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember LaFever?
Aye.
The date of August 20th at 7:00 PM will be for a public hearing, that'll be for our regular city council meeting. Next item on the agenda, citizens' questions and comments.
I'd like to know why I was taken off the agenda tonight. Please answer, Skip. It was your motion.
It was my motion, yeah. The reason being, you'd asked for the resignation of Dee Clark.
Okay, so Dee voted on that, just for the record. Secondly, there's two items I wanted to talk about. One was a clarification on a personal matter, that's all. Can I ask that question?
I missed that part. I can come and see that.
Is it okay? Can I ask that question? Okay. Angela was fired for insubordination, is that correct? Right? Nod your head, or yes or no? She was, she was let go, terminated, because she was insubordinate? Yes, the answer, okay. Nick, would you please tell the audience, in your own words, what insubordination means? You ruined a woman's career over that term. I've got a copy of the letter right here. Do you wanna see it? You better know what it means. If not, you're in a lot of trouble, Nick.
So you don't think I know what insubordination is?
I want you to find it. You can tell us. Simple, three words, definition in Webster-
We need to be able to hear what you're saying, councilmembers, please.
You can recall the term. We have a right to know if he knows what he fired Angela for. Do you know, do you, do you understand what insubordination is? It is a three-word Webster dictionary definition.
You have to know what you voted on.
You voted on it.
Here, Mr. Council, just Bill DeWitt has asked to be heard. Councilmember, we refuse to protest, he has that right, but right now, he's up here, so we'll give every chance to talk if we want, but for now, that's-
So copy the letter they sent to Angela. Nick LaFever, your signature. Please tell us what the definition of insubordination is. Are you going to, or no? Just say no if you don't want to answer, that's fine. Nick, I think you need to resign. There's a letter of resignation, you just need to sign it and date it. For those out here, the Webster's dictionary description is, I didn't bring my glasses, not obeying authority, not a trick. Nick, it's not a trick.
I know what it means, I knew what it means.
Okay, then answer this. And remember, I was on the agenda for this, this is not a citizen's comment. As a Logan city councilman, who are you accountable to?
Citizens.
The citizens, thank you. So when it's obvious that community, that the community wants walking trails in a city park, and you continually vote against it, are you being insubordinate? Answer it. Do you feel that you're being insubordinate? He's not gonna answer, I can tell by the glazed overlook in his eyes. When the mayor warns against jointly attending a park board meeting, but you do anyway, are you being insubordinate?
Can you define how I jointly attended that meeting? I can't, so if I'm on the city council, I can't attend a park board meeting as a citizen.
Three others attended also.
They sat over there, and I sat clear back in-
So you're saying they, you're saying they were insubordinate, Randy, but you were?
That's their-
Okay, okay. When the topic of nuisance abatement comes up repeatedly, and you're personally at the center of that issue, is not, are you not being insubordinate, and is the council not being insubordinate to the community, to the citizens, who you said are your authority, are you not being insubordinate to act upon it?
I make a motion to adjourn this. This is for Randy.
I'm just asking a question, Skip.
You're harassing me.
When more than 200 citizens attend an emergency meeting to protest the actions of this council and to request the situation be handled through proper procedures, are you being insubordinate to those who have, who are, you are accountable to? Unfortunately, we don't have the ability to fire you, I think you will be at the next election. And I'm not out for anything else, though. Citizens, so you know, a group of us has been meeting, we have hired an attorney, we'll be filing charges against these three to have them removed from office. If you would like to be a part of that, or be involved, or help in any way, please stay after the meeting for a few minutes tonight, okay? Thanks.
I just have a list of some questions here I'm gonna ask, I guess, I guess you obviously have the right not to answer them. I wasn't gonna read most of them, but we seem to have some extra time, so. Some of these were rehashing, just previously stated, I just wanted to make sure I understand. Skip, was the reason for Angela's termination contained within the emails you received on July 2nd between the city attorney and Angela's, as previously stated?
Personal matter, not a comment.
Okay. Previously stated was that it was in the, in the emails. I'm wondering why, according to the bills that we've obtained from city, did you consult the city attorney about her dismissal on June 28th, which is prior to receiving the emails? Just asking. You're not gonna answer it this time?
I'll anything to move in with that.
Okay. Randy, Denny, and the other council members, just so you know, according to that bill, letters were exchanged between Skip and Joe Lotterbach, and you as clients to Joe have the rights to that information, to what was exchanged between the two. So I would just request those if I were you. Skip, do you have chickens located on your property? Okay. What about any other property in the city limits of Logan?
Do I have other property?
Do you have, no, do you have chickens located on anybody else's property? No, no, okay, I'm just asking, I just want clarification. Before terminating a longstanding city attorney, did you and your wife consult an attorney about any possible litigation against the city of Logan?
No comment.
Okay. Do you have any ducks or poultry of any other kind on your property?
No comment.
Okay. Was outside counsel consulted on Angela and Joe Lotterbach's termination? Personal matter. Okay. If so, who was aware of this, and did the city pay for it? Randy, do you know if the city paid for outside counsel?
Not that I know of.
Do you intend to use your position as a council member to help your son obtain a position as a Logan police officer?
No comment.
Okay. The reason I've mentioned all these things is because you've put yourself in a position to have a lot of personal conflicts within city business. It's a bad situation to be in, even if it's perceptional. I don't know whether you have any ill or negative intents, I don't know, but you're in, you're in a bad situation. I just, I just bring these things up to make you aware. Dee, first of all, thank you for being here tonight. Considering recent events, do you feel that your lack of attendance to the city council has been fair to the community of Logan?
Fair share.
Okay. At the last meeting, Nick stated that he had observed several things that the city council meetings had, that had led to Angela's termination. How did you become aware of the grounds for Angela's termination?
No comment.
No comment, okay. What about, okay, I'll follow up on that later. Why was there no decision about, about terminations at the emergency, no discussion about terminations at the emergency meeting? No comment, okay. Kind of a reneurs. In retrospect, do you feel that participating in the decision to sell city land, negotiate the price, and approve the sale of property to a family member who was also a council member at the time of a conflict of interest?
No comment.
Okay. As a longstanding, respected member of the community, do you feel that you have served Logan in a manner that would make you and your family proud?
I would hope so.
Do you feel that your name has been tarnished in any way by participation in the council? How many times have you met with Samantha Johnson on official city business?
None that I recall.
Okay, just curious, I've heard that before, just wanted to clarify. How many times have you hung up on Logan citizens trying to ask you about recent events? Do you feel that it's a conflict of interest for the council to fail to act on a nuisance to abate issue brought up on a sitting council member? Can you tell me how you would define a threat? How you define a threat? Or maybe you just, because, because there's been a lot of talk about threats made against the council, and I would like an example of a threat made against the council. Any time that I feel, or someone feels threatened, I would say, I mean, somebody sitting here, somebody sitting here at the council meeting telling me to go run and hide, Jeff? Calling me chicken shit?
That's a name, not really a threat.
I think that was me.
All right, I just wanna clarify, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna, I'll move on, I'll move on, I didn't mean to. I just, do you understand that disagreeing with you and promising to hold you accountable to your actions by removing you from office is not a threat, but rather the civic duty of the citizens of this town? You understand there's a clear difference between a threat and, and holding you accountable for what you've done? Okay. Your question is interesting, Jim, because you're the one that's, you know, come out publicly and, you know, against some of the threats and some of the actions that have taken place. Yeah, that's why I wanna hear them aired, I wanna know what people, I mean, 'cause I think that's wrong. I mean, we're above, we need to stay above that. Okay. I thought that's your position, and you sound like, almost like you're watering it down, like it didn't hap, some of these things didn't happen. No, that's why I asked for the examples, so that you could air that out there. You're just asking. Yeah, yeah. At the last meeting, you said that you had seen Angela do things at the city council meetings that led you to terminate her. Is this correct? Yes, okay. When then, was Angela warned? When was she written up? When was she suspended? And, and what was her probation period? In other words, what steps did you take to follow Logan's employee handbook, specifically Article 3, Sections 1 through 5, leading to her termination? No comment, okay. With no discussion at the time, and the fact that Joe Lotterbach did not attend any council meetings, how did you decide to terminate him? Are you aware of the content of the emails used to terminate Angela and Joe? Yes, you are, okay. At what meetings were you made aware of these emails? Why an emergency meeting when there was a city council meeting scheduled at the end of the next business day? Was there some, I mean, is there something that we as citizens need to know? A law broken? Should we be expecting files to be charged? I mean, is there something that really justifies calling a special meeting for what happened? And then, I just wanna ask you, what city employee do you plan to fire next? Marilyn, for not knowing how to deal with the auditors, or do street reports? Elmer, for not wanting to hire the right policeman? Or Scott, because you don't like his taste in city water?
Don't give my opinion.
I guess I have nothing to prove. Well, I guess, since I wasn't allowed to be on the actual agenda, it might make Councilman Johnson aware of the fact that I had no questions directly for any of the council members, so. I just wanted to make the council and the mayor aware of the city ordinances that they supposedly uphold, and a state law that's directly related to the council's unwillingness to perform their duties correctly or even at all. But before I do that, I wanna refer back to four items. First one being the failure to act upon the ordinances of 440 and 441, which 441 actually has some action taken recently. But over the last few months, May 21st, the regular council meeting ordinance for the water race was tabled, no action taken. May 29th, council meeting ordinance was discussed, but no action taken. June 4th, council meeting ordinance was tabled, so again, no action taken. June 18th, council meeting ordinance was tabled again. July 6th, it was a special council meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda. And July, July 9th, the council meeting ordinances were, was removed from the agenda, so again, no action was taken. July 23rd, the council meeting again showed no action taken for the water. However, the-
However, and again, here is August 6th, and the water issue is not on the agenda again. Same way with the sewer, for those same dates, except that there has been a second reading, as of tonight. Number two, deals with, well, two is the sewer, same dates. Number three is the park board, and the timely manner to appoint new park board members. June 4th, again, the council meeting, there was a discussion only, with no action taken for the park board. June 18th, council meeting, the outing was tabled, so no, no action was taken. July 6th, there was a special council meeting, and that was not on the agenda. July 9th, the council meeting, the outing was tabled again, no action. July 23rd, there was a motion, but it failed for the lack of number of votes. And also, along with that, there's also a requirement in Chapter 23, Paragraph 02, that the council must declare a chairperson and a secretary on an annual basis. None of that's been taken, and again, on the August 6th, tonight's agenda, nothing about the park board. The last item deals with the council's inability to read their own ordinances, and their method for calling special meetings. Of that, I just, I referred to the July 6th special meeting that was called, of which I have documents in my hand showing that that was a non-compliance. Of those four, specific elements I want to read you now. The first is the city ordinance. For municipal infractions. Each time a citizen of the city of Logan violates one of these ordinances, there's a penalty. If I run a stop sign, I can be ticketed. If I have a barking dog, or I have a loud party, I can have a citation issued, a municipal infraction, or civil penalty. That's not just for the citizenry, it's for the council also, to follow also. Chapter 3, Paragraph 1, municipal infractions. A violation of this code of ordinances, or any ordinances or codes herein after adopted by reference or by omission, or failure to perform any act or duty required by these same ordinances, is a municipal infraction punishable by civil penalty as provided herein. Okay? Also, state law, Iowa Code 721.2 says, "Non-felonious misconduct in office. Any public officer or employer, any person acting under color of such officer employment, who knowingly does any of the following commits a serious misdemeanor." Number six in that line is, "fails to perform any duty required by the person by law." These ordinances are law, you're to follow them. Because of these violations of the city ordinances, I would request that the mayor to instruct the chief of police to issue civil citations under Chapter 3.04 of the city code of ordinances of the city of Logan to council members Clark, Johnson, and Lefieber immediately. Or upon the mayor's decision to act, request each to resign as council members.
I'll make this easy on you guys, I only have one question, I'll save it to the end, so you don't have to say no comment all the time. We'll just assume that's your comment. What's happened in the last month, the special meetings, firing people without the proper procedure, not doing what the citizens obviously want you to do, is disturbing, and it makes me angry that this is happening in my town. But what you did tonight was disgusting. Taking people off of the agenda, who had complied, and taken, made sure they were on the agenda, so they could have a, have their piece said, and then you just take them off, because you don't want to hear what they say. That was the first hoop you put in front of us, is, oh, we don't want to answer your questions, so you have to get on the agenda before we'll answer your questions. Now you're doing exactly what I said you would do three weeks, two meetings ago. You would just take us off the agenda, because you don't want to hear what we say, and you don't want to answer our questions. That's the kind of stuff that we expect, unfortunately, to happen in Washington DC. We don't expect that stuff to happen here. And I'd expect people who grew up here, and have lived here for a longer amount of time, to know that. Maybe not people who haven't been here very long, but I'd expect that from others. And that's sickening. And your disregard for what the citizens feel and want is inexcusable. How dare you take people off, this is supposed to be the closest form of government that we have. This is, you're supposed to be here doing our business. If 200 people here say it's the city's business, it's the city's business, whether you like it or not. And you should at least have the common decency to let them speak, and you should also have the common decency to answer. Because, no comment, that's the kind of stuff we expect from career politicians. Not from you. You're supposed to, you're supposed to be in this community, working with us, we should be able to call you anytime, and you should be, you should answer, because this is our community, we're in this together. And you've just turned the city council into something that everyone is against. How do you think you can govern? If you said, if you made a motion that the sky was blue, you'd have 150 people here saying, no, it's green, just to disagree with you. How are you going to govern effectively? I'm sorry, that's a question, probably a personnel issue. My one question is, do you think that Angela ever felt threatened by you three?
I just want to talk to you, Nick, because I don't think it's going to do any good to talk to the other two. But you have coached my little girl in soccer, and this year in softball. And I think out of you three, there's nothing keeping you here, Nick. You could walk away and be the hero. And know that you did the right thing. Nobody, I don't see why you three are sticking together when you know everybody here does not agree with you. And Nick, I think you're a good guy, I like you as my daughter's coach, and when I walk out of here, you're still my friend. But I don't agree with what you three are doing, and I think, Nick, you're smart enough, and you have nothing to lose by walking out this door, and not being on this council.
I hate to be boring and repetitive. Mr. Johnson, Dee, Nicola Fieber. People of Logan would like the three of you to resign. You no longer represent us, we no longer trust you, and we don't want you.
Chris, about the motorcycle and car show, Chris, are you still there? Is this show going to be running up anywhere near North 4th Street at all?
North 4th Street, yeah.
Or North 5th Street? Okay, I just want to make sure, because I don't want any invasion of privacy to a certain citizen.
Any other citizens?
Are you going to follow up with Terry's request?
Yes, I'll have to read it, I don't, so I know what's going on, so. Any other citizens?
Just really quick, Skip, Dee, and Mr. Fieber, I still have not gotten any information from you.
Regarding your free move information, was-
Yes.
Yeah, we just decided to serve you tonight.
So you've decided not to do it?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
And I have one more, I'm sorry, I do have another question, but it's not really a personnel question, so maybe you can answer. You've hired an attorney tonight, will that mean you'll be ready to answer questions at the next council meeting, that are personnel matters, since you'll have time to consult with an attorney?
Possibly.
Possibly, that's your best answer.
Will the city attorney be at the next meeting?
I believe he said he could, I'll verify that on Wednesday. Any other citizens?
What rate is the city attorney going to charge?
He is $150 an hour, and it's a $50 an hour travel time, so that doesn't count.
And how does that compare to the Lotterbach rate?
I'm not sure, I'd have to check. Do you know?
He doesn't, what, he runs the time on his bills for what he charges, so I don't know, you can't tell from his bill.
Really? You can't tell from a bill how much they charge?
He doesn't say the exact amount of hours. I mean, sometimes he'll only charge like $20, $40.
You think we can do, get along, you can do something like that too? We could just put a number down on a invoice and say, there it is.
I'm just going to say $40 for water.
Will we be privy to the information that is going between the council members and this new attorney? I know we're supposed to be, but if we ask for the information, are we going to get it?
Once we receive the request, what's happening, that'll be-
You mean like I already said in the request, and you just said I wasn't going to get the information?
Oh, that wasn't what I said.
That is what you said, ask all the people in this room. Oh, he said, no, I had not decided to do that, that's what came out of his mouth, or he said no?
I'll clarify, we are still considering your request, and make every effort to fulfill it.
How long is it going to take, it's been a month?
Clarify that last statement. What did you just say? You're considering, you said, we will still consider to approve her request for information?
Consider your request, and we'll make every effort to-
You will consider her request for public information. Is that what you just said?
Have you seen her request?
Is it public information, Renee?
Yes, it is.
There's a lot in there.
So?
Is it all public? It doesn't matter how much it is, if it's public, you just said you will consider releasing public information.
It included far more than that in her request, go ahead and read it, ask her for it.
I have seen it.
Okay, then why are we, why are we discussing it?
Because you said you would, how dare you say you will consider releasing public information? That's the whole definition, is public, it's ours.
Okay, any other citizens?
I have one other item. This was the newspaper's entry last week for the minutes of the meeting, okay? The code says that the minutes of the meetings shall be kept, minutes shall be kept of all meetings showing the date, time, place, the members present, and action taken at each meeting. The minutes shall show the results of each vote taken, and information sufficient to indicate the vote of each member present. The vote of each member present shall be made public at an open session. That's it. We have spent to date, from February 6th till July 1st, $2,737 for this baloney. We don't need to know only what the code says needs to be done, because we're spending money we don't need to be spending. And the council needs to take that in consideration, that this, the pocketbooks aren't that deep in the city, okay? So let's just watch our spending habits. And let's not have a bunch of minutia in here for an official document of a public notice that only has to have these elements in it by code. Thank you.
Next agenda item, clerk administrator comments.
I just wanted to remind everybody that on Tuesday, August 14th, will be the city council election. Polls will be open from noon until 8:00 PM.
I heard somebody say, what was that? She just mentioned that the poll, the special election is next Tuesday from 8, or excuse me, from noon to 8, next Tuesday. Motion is second to adjourn.